We are noting at 7:19, the clerk has just alerted us that the recording has not been on.
This is a card, I take full responsibility.
So we will need to make sure that the documentation of what you've presented us tonight is robust, so that we can make it available in the public, since we have we do not have a recording of the conversation. And we do apologize for that. Did you have, or do others have other questions? Those are the things that I'm hearing most frequently from people is, you know, a conflation of the collapse of the Columbia Agreement with the chaos happening at Central Hudson. And it, from what I'm understanding you saying, and what I've been able to understand on my own, is that there are two different big problems that are happening at the same time.
Of course.
So please.
Yes. So in choosing this, we're choosing it for the residents.
We're not making any decisions.
No, if, if, okay, so can you tell me about these mailers that are all coming to everyone, or nearly everyone, that they're asking us directly as residents to choose a clean energy source?
Is it from Jewel?
I don't know which from, I just got it today and haven't had a chance, but it's and that's quite the thing, you know, like where, if I switch.
This is clean choice energy?
So there's other companies to choose from as well. I brought this actually to talk to you about.
So that is an opt-in option that you can definitely sign up to, to get clean energy? And do you know if the price is stable or not stable?
Literally, I've been busy today, been in the mail, and I stuck it in my bag because I, Laura is so well-versed in all of this stuff, that I thought I would bring it to her attention.
Well, let's make clear, now that we are recording, just very quickly before you answer the question, let's make clear that there is no decision-making happening this evening. Jewel.
Nope, that's fine.
Jewel is here making a presentation to us on how they are modifying their potential program going forward, and what the benefits could be to Cold Spring residents. The trustees are making no decision this evening. I think this is a period of time in which we need to gather information about the options that are available before we make any commitment. So this is, tonight is purely information gathering, and that's one of the things that I think we have to do due diligence on is what our options.
Who's out there offering?
Well, I was just gonna make the point that, that sounds like it's for an individual, and so that has existed for a long time, that an individual can choose clean energy. What's really, you know, powerful about something like a CCA is that it means that we are as a municipality, or as a group of municipalities, purchasing energy, that, and it actually has a larger impact than just that collective energy. It's that there are municipalities around New York, or states around the country, that are looking and saying, oh, this is an interesting, this is an interesting model, should we, you know, what do we think about it? Let's, so, so we are, you know, kind of potentially setting an example for others as well. And that's something that's kind of qualitatively different than the individual opt-in. Could you maybe just restate the, I have two questions. One, if you could just restate again the timeline going forward, and this kind of choice piece, and then, and then the other one is if you could just walk us through what opt-out looks like, and what services you provide to help people with an opt-out if they choose to do that?
Sure. So the timeline is that we are now starting the regulatorally-required 60-day education period. That is to inform the public about what the municipality is considering. One of the nice things about that is that it gives an opportunity for municipal leadership to gain some feedback. Right? Because you have meetings, it's Facebook, it's on the website. So people have a chance to feedback about how they feel about the program during that time. At that point, once the 60 days over, we start with an RFP process, which means we start with a competitive bidding process. You see the form of the competitive bids, you know what we're going out to bid for. In this case, there will be two options, like we went over before. We'll choose which option seems most interesting, once you see the structure of the deal, right? And the price that they're coming in at. And then we will run the bids. Once the bids are done, they, you, if, that is the point at which we will choose whether to sign a contract, or not sign a contract, and move forward, or not move forward. Assuming that the village does, does move forward, we will actually do another round of education on the actual structure of the, of the program that the village has chosen. We will then send everyone a letter. In that letter, there will be informations about the program, the structure, the price, and the ability of the right of the person to opt out. There will be a paid postage card in that letter, so that they can just put it in the mailbox, and we will opt them out. There is a website where they can go and fill in their name, and they can opt out that way, or they can call us, they have a telephone number, and they can give us a call. So they have three ways to opt out. We have an official 30-day opt-out period, but in fact, people can opt out at any time. In our experience, it's basically the first week, two weeks, is when people are active, and then after that, it's much calmer. Should there be a choice to go for the, for the new option, there will be a letter, a shorter letter, every three to four times a year, basically telling people the same thing, and again, informing them of the program, and giving them the opportunity to make a choice at that time if they decide to. And so that's basically the structure of the program. Most of our programs are 100% renewable. I will say that CCAs, to your point of collective power, we are a massive portion of New York's renewable energy supply right now. In fact, I think we're the largest purchaser of CCAs as a group across the state, which is just great, because what that means is we have, as a team, taken the renewable certificate from $1, which they were about five years ago, to now between $16 and $22. What that does, it allows for the building of new renewable power plants across New York State. So beyond being beneficial for Cold Spring residents, which it is, from an empowerment perspective of achieving the state goals, when it comes to creating renewables, cleaning our environment, et cetera, CCAs really are delivering, which is, which is excellent, and something to be proud of as well.
And can we go to a very base level of question, which is, there was the opt-in, opt-out option became very controversial last year. And folks said, well, why, why is it that the Board of Trustees get to choose for me what energy I use? What is, what is, why opt-out and not opt-in?
So opt-out allows for group purchasing power. And that does two really important things. It gets residents a significantly better deal. Because the, because there's, you have real power in the market, right? So the terms of the contracts are better. They are far more protective than your normal contract. The pricing is generally speaking better. And in fact, many times, the source of renewables is better, because they're New York State renewables, and they don't come from Texas or California. I mean, renewables everywhere are a great thing, but it's nice to support your own renewables, right? So it's a better deal when it comes from the municipality, and you just don't have group purchasing power when you're making a choice as an individual. Doesn't mean it's a bad thing to make choices as an individual, it's just not the same thing. So that's where it, that's where the benefit comes. And the other thing is, is that what it allows the municipality to do is protect residents from what is, right now, a really crazy system, in that the prices are all over the place, their billing issues are really difficult, and it allows the municipality to act as a bit of a shield in, at this time, in a difficult situation. That's the other good thing about it.
I think earlier you said that the billing issue isn't something that, being part of it, but it's not something that the CCA would resolve. So how would the municipality be shielding?
Only on price. So it allows, it allow, and let's just be clear. You're not, we're not guaranteeing, and you, this would not guarantee that there would be a lower price all the time. What we guarantee is that the price is transparent, more stable, and fair, right? But we don't guarantee continuous savings. So I think that's a, you know, we should be clear about that also from the beginning.
Yeah. Are there any other questions from members of the board? Thank you for bringing that, Catherine. Any other questions from you, Lauren? So next step is, you're in a public information, a public education stage, it's your job to inform the public. Will you provide information that the village can push out to residents to have a look at themselves?
Yeah, absolutely. And we, the first, the real, the like immediate next step is for the village to post language on your website, announcing that this outreach is taking place, and the, the fact that, the sort of big ticket, understanding of what the CCA is. So, so that allows us to start the 60-day clock, the regulatorally-required outreach period, and it also lets people know that when we're setting up meetings, you've, it's on the website that, that this is something that's happening. Outreach meetings to educate people. So we'll have meetings, we'll do Facebook, we'll be in the local press, we'll really try and make sure that as many people as possible are informed about the choice or the program that's being considered.
And obviously, the village, we wouldn't be making any decision without getting some public feedback on, on the proposal itself. I am gonna pause, we have a couple members of the public on. Are there questions that any members of the public would like to put forward on this agenda item before we move on?
Or tweets?
Or tweets, so tweets. Yes, I forgot tweets was online, sorry, tweets. Okay.
I have a question.
Oh, please.
All right.
Well, I understood you, but I'd like to just run this through again. Number of years ago, we elected to have a clean energy provider, provide certain portion of the energy at their cost, which is lower than what Central Hudson charges, but it comes together on the Central Hudson bill. Once a year, they inform us whether they're going to raise their rates or not, and we can agree to that or not. Can we, unfortunately can't remember the name of the company, begins with an A, I don't know if that's any good. Would we be able to continue with that provider, which we have liked so far, and given us good prices? They don't give us the whole, they only give us a portion of the electricity from clean energy in New York State.
Do you happen to know who the provider is giving the energy to? Is it to the village itself?
No, it's to individuals.
It's to all the individuals?
I can't tell you more than that, that's all I know, is I can't.
Unless it's the community, was it, is it the community solar program? No. It may be one, it may be one, something like this. Isn't that KDR, KDA?
An individual option?
Individual option.
If you get me more information, I will look, and then I'll be able to answer that question. Right now, I, I
How should I provide it to you?
She had my
Or you give it to me and
Yeah, I'm happy to answer, but I, I should probably look it up, so that I can answer better. If it's an individual thing, I think that's actually relevant, though. If somebody has chosen their own, like, for example, if that is an individual choice you've made, just, let's just say it's one person or others, they are automatically not even sent a letter. So they're just taken off the list immediately. So if they made their own choice, this is only for people who have not made their own choice. We don't override any personal choices.
This was prior to the Columbia thing?
For sure.
These eight, nine, ten years.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I, if you send me the name.
That is how I'm like, oh, go ahead.
So why would you not send it to someone who, I mean, just because they have chosen someone else doesn't mean that they would not consider you? So why wouldn't you?
But, well, what we do is, we do a lot of public outreach. So if they hear about us, or they will hear about us, if they hear about us and then wanna opt in, they can. And in fact, during the last program, we had a lot of opt-ins, because of the amount we were saving. But if they made a personal choice, then that's their choice. So, so we don't move them if they have somebody else they've chosen, yeah.
Information would be available to them, or not?
Information, absolutely, but it's available on your website, it's available in the newspaper, that we don't
We should speak it out.
They need to see it.
And in the case of someone like Jim, who has already opted into another option or program, could he come, come on with the village's choice at any time?
Yes. So anytime somebody wants to opt in, we, that's no problem. They, they totally can, yeah.
So that sounds like an area of education that needs to happen, for folks who've already chosen an option.
For sure, yeah. No, so during the education, actually, a lot is, a lot of the education ends up being about exactly those kinds of questions, and then, for example, people bring their bill and want to explain, like, what here will change, and those kinds of things. It's very, very sort of hands-on and practical.
I remember when this launched in the first round, that there were office hours here at Village Hall, where someone from Jewel was available to answer questions.
Yes, so that will be started again.
Thank you very much. You'll follow up with the clerk with information. Are we good? We covered, we needed to cover. Thanks so much for coming in.
Are you comfortable that I, that we send the, the website language for you to post, so that we can start the outreach?
So send it to the clerk.
Okay.
We'll all have a look through it, and make sure that everyone's on board, and then we can, so I can confirm with you after we have a look at it.
That sounds great. Okay, good. Thank you.
You didn't have to say you did this.
Oh, well, thank you, because I was, you know, you can hear things tons of times, and then doing it yourself is always different. But lovely to be here. Thank you very much, and have a great coming in.
Okay, thank you. Bye, bye. I'm gonna move over to the stage, so everybody a little better. And I dove right in tonight with, with our presentation, and skipped announcements. So I'm gonna pause for a moment, before we move into our next big topic area, and make some announcements. First, regarding garbage recycling, there will be a holiday schedule for garbage and recycling next week, Thanksgiving week. Garbage will get picked up on Friday, and recycling will get picked up on Saturday, so you'll need to put things out a day later. Leaves are getting picked up tomorrow, and we have arranged for an additional pickup day on December 8. So you'll have one more chance to get, if you are choosing to rake your leaves, you'll have one more chance to get them up. And with that, a reminder that it is a code violation to blow leaves into the street, and especially into the drains. It causes real storm water problems, to have our, our drains filled with leaves. So please bag your leaves in paper, or another reusable container, and put them by the street side. If we, if you are seen blowing into the street, you can be issued a summons, so try to avoid that. The village's holiday schedule, it's already that time of year. The office will close at noon on Wednesday, the 23rd, before Thanksgiving. On Friday, the 23rd, the office will be closed, and on the 26th, after Christmas, and then again on January 2nd, which is a Monday. Couple of other things, the, there is a public session sponsored by the Fjord Trail and State Parks, this Sunday, from 2:00 to 4:00 at Duchess Manor. It's an opportunity to talk about visitation, tourism, express concerns, and put forward ideas. Several of us from the village board, and several of us from the planning board, will attend as listeners, but it is a, it is a Fjord Trail event. We do encourage villagers to go and participate. It's really important that voices from the village be heard at that forum. And you do have to register. So on the hht.org website, there is a location under events for you to register. Last, almost last, endpoints. We're in the process of having the endpoints installed. These are sort of communication ends on the smart meters that track our water use. They are being moved to exterior endpoints. The, the company, you've probably seen the Saks trucks around the village, Saks is the contractor putting those in. The advantages of exterior installation for these readers is better communication, so the accuracy of your actual use will be better outside of the building, and also no one needs to come into your house again to service the meter. So this is an example, folks have been wondering what they look like, whoop, we had it a second ago. This is one of the installations that was done in the village this week. On the left is a phone box, and on the right is what the new meter box looks like, to give you a sense of size. Some folks have been concerned about, you know, what it look, what it looks like, it's gonna be a big object on my, on my facade, it's not any bigger than your, than your phone and cable boxes. And they do show you the location that they propose before they install, and have a, give a chance to look at it, they use a level and make sure it's straight. And then you're done, and you don't have to think about your endpoint again. So really encouraging people to allow that, allow that access, so that your, your water usage and billing is as accurate as it can be. We've also run into, in a number of locations, water meters that have been made inaccessible in basements. People have, look, they're not the most beautiful things in the world, people have enclosed them, they now can't be got to. It is also a code violation to enclose your, to enclose your water meter, so that it is inaccessible to staff who need to service it. So we will be following up with those properties going forward. If you have not enclosed your water meter, please do not. We need to be able to get to your meter. Okay, and last, dockside. There've been a number of questions in the last week about dockside, and, and what is happening with dockside. Just confirming, it's a state park, the village does manage dockside. We will be trained, our team will be trained in the spring for maintaining the new plants, and we'll be hoping to bring on volunteers to assist with that. It is intended to be a changeable shoreline. There's been a lot of question about debris washing up from the river. That's how rivers work. We live on a tidal river, it flows both ways. Objects come up onto the shoreline, get pulled back with tide. So the shoreline will never look the same the time you're there, and it's not meant to be a tidy shoreline. It's meant to be a natural shoreline that is stable. So you will see driftwood coming in and out, you will see plants shifting around. There was quite a bit of trouble with the plants that were put in this fall because of the drought, and they didn't take well, the roots, some of the roots weren't able to extend as well as you would have liked them to be, those plants. State parks have said that they will be replaced in the spring. So we are aware, we see that, that plants are coming up, the state, state parks is aware, this is a, this is a shoreline stabilization in progress. And I have requested an updated schedule for when the new signage will go in, so hoping to hear from that, back on that soon. Okay, so now that's the topic that I assume everyone is gathering to hear, is an update on parking plan. Eliza has been working with the parking committee's recommendations from last year, that were accepted by the last village board, but not implemented, and she is looking to implementation. I want to be clear that what's in the record tonight, this is a workshop. And workshops are times when work is done. We're not decision-making tonight, we are bouncing ideas and discussing them. You get to see the village board at work. So things, there may be things that change. We're here tonight to exchange, for Eliza to report out to us what she has identified, in terms of process, and what needs to happen next, and we're gonna have discussion about it, so sort of public, public work in action. Turn it over to you.
All right, so just kind of a brief summary of how we got here. I believe it started in 2015, when the village actually went to the state with a pushing plan request, and got the allowance to
Enabling legislation.
Yeah, enabling legislation to put in meters on Main Street, and put permits on the resident side streets. So the reason the village wanted to do that was because we have tourism, and we have costs that are related to tourism, but we don't have any revenue from tourism beyond, you know, the sea streak. So, and our costs are much higher than that. So this was low-hanging fruit. It's not for, for the village to have a larger budget, to do more things for our residents, and to make sure that tourism is managed, and doesn't run us over. So that's, that's sort of the gist of it. In my analysis, I, you know, am working to assess all of the different pieces. So we've got code chapters that we're gonna have to update to make work with the recommendations that were accepted in the parking plan. And I also wanted to assess safety setbacks on crosswalks. Our crosswalks are not currently up to the required setbacks. There's sort of a buffer zone that should be at all the crosswalks, and they're they have been updated in some places in chapter 126 last year, by the village board, but not all of them.
The crosswalks weren't treated consistently?
That's right, they're not treated consistently. So in actually implementing safer crosswalks for our villagers, we're gonna lose about 20 parking spaces on Main Street. So that's one thing that I wanted to assess, how many parking spaces we have, what kind of budget we're gonna, you know, actually have in reality. And the other thing with signage, our village signage is kind of all over the place, some of them you can't even read. So I did an assessment with the help from Catherine, on what signs are there, what's missing, what needs to be put in in order for the parking plan to function.
And working from the work that had been done previously with by trustees America, Early and Murphy, you took their spreadsheet and went from there, so you had a basis.
That's right. So, so we're, you know, and I really appreciate the work that's been done before me. We had, we're also including information that we got from, like, the let's see, the Cornell Roads Program Manual for what the actual rules are on setbacks, but I was also looking at the village plan, was it the comprehensive plan for recommendations on, like, what are our goals as a village, and improving walkability, and improving signage were part of those recommendations within the comprehensive plan. So doing this in a more sort of holistic way, that considers all these different elements that villagers have been speaking about and working on for years, and documenting, there's, there's great documentation that I was pulling from. So, let me think, next, oh, so part of the things that we also wanted to add, included on top of the safer crosswalk standards, was also making sure that we have enough ADA parking spaces, and also adding back 15-minute parking spaces that used to be there on Main Street that were lost in the last, I think when they made our crosswalks and corners ADA standard, they just removed some of the 15-minute parking spaces, so
And the benefit of a 15-minute parking space.
That, I mean, that's something that villagers and, and the community uses all the time to access Main Street, to come down and pick up something quickly, so that villagers and, and the community members can actually treat Main Street like it's their shopping center, and not just where tourists come.
So that, there's brief access on, during busy times.
That's right. It's also, they also function as a place for, where loading trucks often stop, and where you don't have them, the loading trucks will stop in the middle of the street, they'll stop on side streets and block one direction of traffic. So right now, there, I mean, the village doesn't have loading zones, and but by adding buffers at the crosswalks and 15-minute parkings, we'll have larger areas that will be more often available to, you know, trucks if they come in. That's right, to safely pull up and get out of the way. So hopefully that'll help prevent bottlenecking on Main Street, and in those intersections off of Main Street. Hydrant standards are also another one that we're not being upheld by our, our, at our corners, and, and just so everyone knows, you see And and just so everyone knows, when I went driving close ten feet from the hydrant is where you park. Now it's fifteen. So they've been increased and um those are, those should be marked so that people know. And 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 when I'm going through all of this, I'm thinking about. How to make it easier for everyone to follow the rules? Cause if they're not clearly stated, it's really hard to like understand where you're supposed to, where you're allowed to park and where you're not. Also make it easier for enforcement. Cause if our officers don't know what hours to ticket, how can they take it?
Or if it's not signed in a way that the officers have ground to stand on.
Exactly. So I think that that makes it, you know, easier for everyone and and will hopefully. Once this sort of plan goes into place and everyone kind of relaxes into it and gets with the program, I think it'll it'll make it move more smoothly. So let's see, we've got the hydrants, we've got the crosswalk setbacks, ADA. Um there are a couple of spots where there were stop signs on Kimball at the corners of Main and Kimball. Um Main and Fair and Len Terrace where stop signs are like ten feet back from. The corner of the building. So you can't actually see around the corner. And where you stop your car, you have to creep forward anyway. So I'm also recommending to make those stop signs closer to the corner so that cars can see. Um and also the U-turn area at the bottom of the hill. So at at Main and the tracks. Um legally, cars can turn their cars or they're do a U-turn and turn around. That's the only place on Main Street that it's allowed. We have no U-turn signs everywhere else, but in this one place, it's acceptable and half the residents I've talked to didn't even know it.
But it's by default, a U-turn.
Yeah. Um so and and we have officers who sometimes don't know that it's legal or not.
I don't think that's a case. I think the the issue is folks parking.
Definitely not allowed.
Um so the stop signs, moving back to stop signs, what what do you base? Uh I'm not sorry, not moving them back, but moving them forward.
Yeah.
What uh what regulation did you find for for where? A stop sign is optimally placed?
Yeah, I I didn't actually see any guid- guidance there. So I was more going by sightlines. Um so I can I can look a little bit harder, but I.
And you may also check, you know, talks. I know Larry's looked at this a couple of times with you, but that would be a specific question to ask.
We're so far back and then you can't tell if anybody's coming or not and then you have to pull up to see.
Furnace is one way.
Going this way.
Furnace is so that still a wall.
Oh, you're talking about the other end. I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about it Main Street.
Well, that's it. It's at the corner of, but it's just that there's sort of a turnoff, but. I don't, you know, in thinking about this, I'm I'm really trying to target the places where there's high traffic and fast traffic. And these little side streets are not quite as dangerous as what we see.
Hold on, can I interject just specifically on that site since I I know I know it well? Um it, there is actually a lot of traffic there and there's often trucks coming from food town. And trying to make a crazy turn or um you know, the everyone coming to the intersection and. Because the stop sign is not very visible, people often running through the stop sign. And then also people going down one-way streets, especially on weekends where we've had a lot of um tourism and stuff. I don't know what happens. The fresh air, people's brains, they get a little silly and they make really strange decisions. But I would say that, you know, since we're making an effort to to do these. Safety measures, we should be comprehensive about it and include.
I'm wondering if that's a a candidate for a painted stop on the street. There's limit, there are limitations in that location because of the drop off.
Yes, also people park, you know, I mean, the parking that they're doing is also insane because they're parking on. Wall. Um on the weekends when there's, when they can't find parking. On the main streets and then they're parking on furnace, turning onto wall as well. So like, talk about like.
Wall is one of the places where signage is indicated to be installed. And was and in the previous, that was on the Marie and Fran list as well. Wall wall is without signage.
And I wonder if for some of these tighter corners and, you know, put taking furnace in this intersection out of. You know, large, those mirrors so that you can see. Um you know, particularly when you are going down wall to Kimball. You know, and it's kind of it's a little steep.
Yes, so my my recommendation at this stage is that we focus on the one problem that we're trying to solve.
I'm sorry, and that one problem.
No, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but we want what we're, the goal here is to get to get the. A very, a version of what the parking committee put forward last year implemented. So that we have the income and that needs to be the the priority right now. And I think those other things, those other kinds of traffic. Safety and calming devices will come, but our first priority is getting those meters in so we have the income.
So yeah, tonight we're really focusing within the parking residential parking district that the parking committee worked on. So that's great on the outside. Yeah, I mean, that stop sign is the edge. So um but there are other areas that I would love to address and tackle later. So I will add that to my list. So um. The general um. Recommendation of the parking committee was what we're tasked with. Um there were a couple of things that I. Wanted to discuss with the board in terms of um adjustments. Because we lose so many parking meters on Main Street to crosswalk safety. Um I would like to recommend that we consider. Um making Fair Street one-way on Saturday and metering the twenty spot there. On Saturdays only. I wouldn't do Sundays because I think there's a precedent and the church um community might. Have an issue, but um I think Saturdays uh is an opportunity.
So the same, you're talking about the length from Maine to Northern.
That's right.
That is currently one-way on Sundays. Um I knew this, but I had forgotten. I went out and looked at the signs again today and I think this is one of the. Modifications in one twenty six. The signs are six AM to six PM. Which is how it ends up being. Right, so but it is sort of, it does become a pressure valve. On that block and that the, not that block, but that those several blocks of fair. Um I just wanted to go back, keep talking. I wanted to find, I don't remember where we left. When one twenty six was updated last year, where we left.
There's, so I believe it's one-way also on Saturday right now from four PM to seven.
It's 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 default. I don't think it's codified that way. I think it just gets used that way.
I believe it's in the. Um so Fair Street.
North from Maine to Northern. Oh no, you're right. It is in the code. This shall apply only on Saturdays from four to seven and Sundays from six AM to six PM. So there's already a chunk of Saturday that is used as one-way and. With street becomes one-way and it's used for parking. So your proposal would be extending it through the day.
That's right. So that was, that was one point that I want, you know, feedback from the board and the public. As we, you know, consider. And again, that would, you know. Earn back the revenue that would be lost.
How many spots get gained?
So there's twenty-six spots on Fair Street that are gained. Um obviously, it would only be one day of the week, so it wouldn't be. This two, it wouldn't be the whole weekend. So I kind of counted as thirteen spots in the whole plan. Um in terms of revenue, like if we're metering it and we're counting how many spots you get.
Yeah, the other thing that would be helpful to to residents on that block is the driveways are not. Xed. And we don't want to recreate a situation on that block like we have on blocks like Stone and High where people can't see to get out of their driveway. So that, I don't know how that, if that shifts the calculation, but we need to make sure that we're driveways. There are a number of, there are fewer on the on the. West east side of the street. I can't picture it right now, but there are enough, there are enough driveways and it makes.
Yeah, so I I think that's a great suggestion.
And even if we recoup dozen. Gets us back from twenty.
So yeah, if we um. If we do Saturdays. And we were charging, for instance. Three fifty, we would burn twenty-two thousand, almost twenty-three thousand a year on Fair Street.
Well, that's that's something that, and we can go into more detail when you get to numbers, but I I wanted to make clear. As I look at your spreadsheet, what I think you're assuming here is that every spot is filled every minute. It would be good to, I think, work with Michelle on some modeling for um. You know, sort of a range of, a range of of income that we could potentially expect, given optimum usage, minimum usage, medium.
January usage.
So so that brings.
Well, and not every minute of every day.
That that brings me to the next piece of the discussion of things that the village board um and the community needs to sort of decide. Is what are the hours that we want to meter on Main Street? Um the parking committee. Asked for it to be Saturdays and Sundays and holidays. But they didn't specify, I don't believe, I didn't see, uh and forgive me if it's in there, but the hours. Um and so I would like to propose that ten to five are, yeah, if it isn't ten to five, it should be. Because I think it should be in sync with the resident permit.
Yeah, ten to five. No, that you, this is the reference for residential permits, but you're right, that it should, I would think that you would want them to be.
Right, and and that's so that it is. So so that it's convenient to the um residents of Main Street that it turns on and off at the same time. Um and gives them that buffer in the morning to move cars and early evenings to park. So.
A question that I would like to ask about that, and I think it could, it would be useful to have potentially. The parking committee sit with us for one of these sessions. I'm wondering why it was ten and not nine. Um because people do come, people do come early um on visitor, on busy visitor weekends.
I believe um as a Main Street resident. I believe it was in consideration for residents because if you are a resident on Main Street, getting up at eight or nine to move your car. Is, you know, less convenient than ten. So I think they were giving a window plus Main Street, most Main Street businesses. Other than the restaurants and the coffee shops don't open before eleven. So it was kind of working with the hours of. Functionality in people's lives and in the business district.
And can we consider then ten to six? Is is there, what what was the rationale?
So at five, I think, is is kind of assuming that people are coming home from work between five and six or seven. If you're a resident of Main Street.
But we're talking about weekends mostly.
That's true. Um but even though it's time people come home for dinner.
Yeah, but the village is still packed on Saturday nights. I can see that argument. Yeah, maybe that's one, as you're doing all those scenarios, look at how much that might.
I did, I did do that. There is one that is nine to six. I did nine to five. The. Um the pricing would be the same as nine to five. So there's a. Sheet that says parking plan income projections for. Um the eight-hour slot, you could make it ten to six or you could make it nine to five. But that would give you the price projections. Again, these numbers only reflect. If every spot is filled at all times, but given our weekends, generally they will be except for from January until May.
But we're considering these, I thought you did a lot of these projections for. Oh, some of them are for May to December anyway.
Right, so that's another piece that I wanted to propose for consideration. Is um that we meter Main Street only during the high season. So from May first until December thirty-first, we meter and then I would propose that we don't meter. From January to April, the end of April. And that's because A um. We're trying to solve a problem. The problem is not enough parking and slammed village.
And revenue.
And revenue, but we also. Like from January to April, it's all residents that are coming down. The people who are parking on Main Street.
I don't think so anymore.
Anymore.
This this this, I mean, COVID changed everything. Um and the season extends and extends. I I would. That's something I wouldn't be in favor of. I would, I think the weekends all through the year, we we need, we need the revenue. That that that's just, that's my opinion. Others.
My opinion is you're metering Monday to Sunday. Whether it's fifty cents on Monday for residents. I mean, you've got everybody running to the train. It's gone back on the train, parking on Main Street. You've got contractors or people there all day. Then, I mean, I come down here at nine-thirty or ten o'clock in the morning and there's no place to park on Main Street because people have camped out. For the day, weekdays.
I will admit, I'm I'm guilty of it. On days when I need the car to go in and out to meetings, I will, I have parked on Main Street and that's my own. It's it, we, my point is we all need to make behavior changes around around Main Street.
I agree with you, but there are people that are not going to make behavior changes because. There's just not. And so then they should put some money in the meter.
Well, it's also been interesting over the last few weeks. Being on Main Street all day and seeing the number of people who are coming during the week because they know it's less crowded, visitors coming during the week because they know it's less crowded.
We are a nearly three hundred and sixty-five day a year tourist destination with, you know, the crazy in October. But people are coming here all year long and I don't think we should forget them.
And I mean, I, you have a better, I am interested to hear the the Main Street, you know, real sense of it and I don't. Maybe, maybe it's worth talking through. Can you explain what happens for Main Street residents and where they're parking? I'm just wondering how that factors in and whether that's like another pieces for making this decision that that.
Wait, so um that was a hard one and and the parking committee addressed that issue. As best as they could by creating um free public parking areas.
Though the law requires.
Right, yeah, twenty percent of all of the residential permit parking streets. Um have to have twenty percent or more. And um the parking committee actually um. Set up so that it's more like thirty-five percent. They increased it um for residents so that there are basically around the corner. Like Stone Street has a large, like more than half of the parking spaces on Stone Street will actually be free public parking. Um but they left little buffers and then there's a whole section on Northern. Um that has about twenty-one parking spaces that are free public spaces. So, you know. I may have to park my car over on Northern instead of um where I usually do near Main Street. But there are spaces that are that are going to be left free that are within, you know, a block to a block and a half of the house. So that's, that's generally the way it was addressed. It's not a perfect solution and I don't think that the residents of Main Street are gonna be thrilled. At losing the privilege that they had before. Um but it's a start. And it was just like, it was a solution that would at least begin to address that issue.
Can I have a question? So, because we have these meterless, you know, the the sort of electronic ways to be paying, it gives. Seems like it gives us some flexibility as we see what the behavior is, and we could adapt, at least on price, that's one of the that I imagine. So what are you imagining? What would be fixed on these like signs that we're investing in?
Yeah.
Would will they have to, they'll probably have to say made to, they'll give a seasonality or or hours or, you know.
That's that's one that I'm really struggling with, is like, how do we establish signage that will be flexible enough for us to make adjustments? Because I expect that we will want to make adjustments after the first six months of the, you know. Demo test of what metering and residential parking permits look like, and we will be gathering public comment and feedback. And I hope that all the residents who are impacted by it will send us emails and tell us what's working, what's not working. So that we can reevaluate in six months. And see what needs to be tweaked and where we can.
How other, sorry, go ahead.
Just a quick note, but generally speaking, when meters are not taking money. They will tell someone who's trying to pay that it's not.
Say it's not needed right now.
Yeah, I that that's true, and I I would love to find a way to do signage that will not frustrate people. Because if you come to Main Street on Monday, and you're like, oh, I gotta fiddle with this app, and the new star is like, oh, it doesn't even matter. Like, that's, you know, three minutes of your life you just lost, so.
It might go the other way too, right? Thinking that you don't have to pay, and then you do, and then you get. It's worth looking at how, it's worth looking at how other communities that use Park Mobile handle their signage. Was one of one of the examples I remember the the committee looking at.
So so and in terms of general signage, I would, you know, like, I've planned for signs that would say. The general parking rules that are all the time. So if if we're adjusting Main Street to be three hours, which was the parking plan's limit on Main Street. Right now, it's four hours. So I would recommend that the village adopt a three hour consistently. Like on Main Street parking rule, so that from ten to five or nine to ten to six, whatever hours we choose. They are just consistently that rule. So any way that we can, we can make rules consistent. Standardize will help people know what to expect and and to follow the correct behavior. If it changes every other day or every weekend and. Holidays, it it's going to get really confusing, and that's it's just an excuse for people not to follow it. So so that was another point was, you know, does the village board feel comfortable with. You know, setting Main Street to be a three hour zone.
That is what the what the parking committee recommended, right? It was three hours.
Well, that was just for the meters, but it's not for the rest of the week, you know. So if I park there on Monday. Is it four hours or is it three hours?
Um, right now, we're doing board discussion, but we will open for public comment in a bit. Thank you very much.
Let me just keep going through my list. There are a couple other recommendations. There are two parking spots on Main Street that are, they're not parking spots, they're driveways, but they're not being accessed. So we can add those back to inventory.
Forty forty mains. Driveways no longer a driveway, the the roll the roll door is no longer a vehicle access.
And then there's architects as a driveway that used to be driveway that is no longer. So that's gaining too.
And then say that, uh, there are two in between.
That's not a, yeah, but it's not crossed off, so it's parking right now. Then. So what I would love to establish is, yeah, what we want that those hours in the business on Main Street to be. Is it ten to five, is it ten to six?
I I think extending, I think extending to six. I mean, obviously, we need to have public conversation. But we also are forgetting that I am forgetting, I'm sorry, sweeps, that you're online. Do you have comment that you would like to make in any of the discussion?
Um, I had a thought, and this would probably be a little bit controversial, but I think it's kind of an interesting idea. And I wonder if Park Mobile does any of this, but kind of like surge pricing, if you will. You know, is is the like. If demand increases, I mean, you know, it would only be to a certain point, you know, the the price. But that way you could sort of. What am I trying to say? Like, basically, change, change it based on need.
By volume, you mean? I mean, I can see how that would be.
Like surge pricing, basically.
Yeah, I can see how that would.
Do a point, like, not not, you know, not like Uber sur- surge pricing, where it's like, all of a sudden, a thousand dollars to get like two blocks. I don't mean like that. I just mean like, you know, if our max is, say, like, four dollars. But we find that on a Monday, you know, all of a sudden, all the spots are are taken, you know, is there. Instead of making it one dollar on Monday and five dollars on, I'm just using these random numbers, five dollars on a Saturday. What if, what if there was kind of a flexibility based on. Demand, basically.
I think that because we're a village, it it should be more stable, and we're we're really just trying to make sure that we're earning enough. To cover our costs, so we shouldn't necessarily be running like a business where like supply meets demand or pricing meets demand.
Also, we need to remember that. The way municipal budgeting and funding works is there's the budget, the the expense budget and the revenue side. And it's not a direct, right? It's like this thing doesn't come in to pay off that. It comes into one bucket for revenue, and we have one bucket out for expenses. So it's all coming into the same pot from which we draw for operations for the larger budget. So it's not a, it's not a a direct.
We budget to zero.
We budget to zero.
You know, expenses have to, expenses and revenue should equal out at the end, at the beginning of the year and the end of the year. Yes, it doesn't always happen, but we have to, we have to start with the assumption that whatever we bring in, we're gonna spend.
Right, but tweets to your.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's sort of separate from, I'm not, I'm not trying to make a, like, a a business of making money on meters. Because that's, I appreciate, that's not the point. I'm just saying, trying to find some flexibility in ways of using the technology that exists. And and trying to match it toward. You know, the way the streets are being used. So, because there, I think there will be times when, you know, charging four dollars or a dollar. Is probably not. Enough for for the, for the demand and for the value of that space.
What that does, I mean. I think the way the parking committee came at at pricing. Allowed, I would probably go, I would recommend a little bit higher, but they're looking at driving turnover. If you set pricing too high, what we don't want to end up doing is pushing everyone out across. Across the rest of the village as well, right? We're wanting to concentrate in the municipal lot and on Main Street as much as we can. I do think there's value in pricing the lots lower than Main Street to drive people to the lots.
Right, so one of my recommendations was to tier the pricing, where the the supply is the smallest and the demand is the highest is. Main Street and and. Anywhere beyond Main Street will be less. And we're also not capitalizing as a village on the free parking at Metro North Lot. So ultimately, I think in implementing this plan, if we had a map that shows free parking over here, go there. And parking here, metered parking here, metered parking here, metered parking here, residential parking, no parking. If we had a map that described that and explained that the people could either take home or see online. But gave more clear information on where people can park, that eventually it would help be a guide for people to. You know, learn the patterns that work here.
Is that information that could be added to Park Mobile, like when you go on the on the app on your phone? And you're standing, you know, and you're sitting in your car about to pay, and you see, you know. For three dol- for two dollars less, you can park, you know, at the. Wherever else besides Main Street. Is that is that kind of the kind of information that could come up on on the app when you're?
I don't believe so, but.
It's just like a straight paying spot eighty two, I'm paying.
Right, you put in your zone, and it basically gives you the pricing for that zone that you're parking in.
Some of them you can click on other zones. Maybe that's not Park Mobile, but.
Yeah, I would have to check with with the app that we're using to to find out, you know, the same way, like, we've been researching with Granicus. I could probably set up a call with them and get a little bit of a presentation on how those kinds of pieces could be helpful.
Well, there have been, Park Mobile presented to the parking committee. So there is that presentation available. It'd be good to to make sure that the information that was given then is still. Up to date, but you can, you can watch that presentation to the parking. And there was also a chamber meeting that I don't think that was reported.
The fact that there are no meters below the tracks is also an incentive to get people to move around the village. In a way, I mean, I hope at some point, not too distant future, we can have a discussion about metering lower. Lower village, but in short term, that's not going to happen. And so there is an incentive to not. Stay right on Main Street and clog up all parking on Main Street.
Right. I do think it's a discussion worth having going forward, but again, I think focusing on the recommendations that we've got right now is where we start.
Yeah, I I would love to tackle our our Main Street next, but I definitely want to get this done first. So. In terms of rates. I gave a couple different models to consider. I would love for us to think about pricing Main Street meters somewhere between three and four. And pricing, if if we so decide to adopt Fair Street meters on Saturday, fifty cents less. I would also like to propose, and this is kind of a weird one, but the fifteen minute spots. Charging those as well, and this is because if you have to go on and set what time you start and end. It's not about the money as much as it is enforcement, because people will have used the fifteen minute spot. And do, and so if they are charged a dollar or seventy five cents. I mean, there is a fee associated with just using the the app, so we want to make sure that it covers that fee. But it's more about an enforcement and making sure that people are moving out of those spots, and those spots are kept open for people to come and go. So. Would love to hear feedback on on rates that we feel are appropriate on Main Street on the weekend.
You're looking like you're about to add something in.
No, I was just about to say I'm totally in favor of metering fifteen minute spots, because I I think I said it to one of you. I go to Nyack, I run in a bakery to pick up a cake, I'm out in eight minutes, I still gotta put money in later, because you're gonna get a dickhead of. So, um, I agree with the tiering, you know, on the side streets, just to try and get to free up. The Main Street. And and again, I I don't think.
When you're talking about tiering on this side, you're talking about Fair Street. We're not proposing metering on other side streets, right? Just to make sure that we're clear.
Um, yeah, I would, I would definitely be in favor of doing that, so. Frog out of my throat.
Yeah, so just to give you an idea, like, the parking committee had suggested that. It's two fifty as the same same rate as the municipal lots. So if it were seven hours on Main Street all year. The village would earn, you know, and if there were spots were filled up every weekend. It would be a hundred and seventy five.
Caveats on all of this. Did you take into account credit card processing fees? Because that takes twelve percent off the top.
They charge part of the fee on top of the number.
I think before we get to. I want to make sure that that people understand that this is, this is you. Taking a best guess, and we need to make, we need to sit with the village treasurer and model out and make sure we've accounted for. Things like, have we properly accounted for the for the credit card fees, et cetera? Like, this, this gives us a sense, but this isn't necessarily.
This is a projection, that's how you make decisions.
Right, exactly. You need, you need to start, start somewhere, but I'm wanting to make sure that everyone understands that.
These numbers are definitely the high side. Yeah.
So that we all understand, this is, this is the high side, this is the hopeful.
This would be the max. We will never reach this number, because there's always going to be days when there's nobody, you know. So, but this is, you know, like, if you're projecting, you project the high number, and then just assume that it'll be below this and never above.
Well, that's like, I'm sorry, but the C streak, you know, I mean, they didn't come, they turned out sold the.
Right, right.
We had projections and they, you know, and we're grateful for what we did do.
Right.
But they don't always get realized, so we have to just add a dose of reality to the projections, I think.
I expect that Michelle would probably only take like two thirds or a third or a half of this. And not, you know, put that into her, the whole number in her budget, because she is conservative about her projections.
Well, again, this is, it's, this is our initial conversation, so it gives us a range. Very odd.
So.
You were, we were talking about the three hour time slots on Main Street for the municipal lot, Mayor's Park. Is there a time?
Limits, those, those do not, I believe, have limits. I think those are twenty four hour parking lots. They have different rates at different times of the day. But they're not limited.
Okay. Okay, I I think there's a benefit to it of kind of pushing people that are here for longer to those lots and then having the higher turnover on Main Street.
Yeah.
And actually, what I remember is that the the fees, the fees are only for a certain amount during the day. It's not like it's an overnight fee.
Right, right. Right.
And and so essentially, Main Street is the same way. You can park on Main Street, but when you without a fee.
Right, yeah.
Then you can stay for as long as you want and or. Three hour, the the three hours only during that time period. In the the recommendations from the parking committee. For the municipal lot in Mayor's Park, it was weekend, weekend and holidays, five P M to nine A M unlimited. Weekdays, dollar twenty five an hour unlimited. I think it's, I think, I think it's low too.
Yeah, that was, how long ago?
Just a year ago.
Oh, really?
It's like a lifetime. Um, but I I I do think that, I think that's too low, and I like the idea of tiering as well. So the sweeps, do you have feedback on that? She may be dealing with small person. Um, I'm gonna pause. We do see that that Jack, Jack was part of the parking committee, and we are, we will take public comment, absolutely. But I I would like to add to see what Jack has his hand up regarding, because I think it will be useful from a data perspective.
Thank you. I've got to go, or I would have waited my turn. Just a couple of things. One is that the parking committee did originally, the parking committee had had recommended twenty percent free spaces. In the residential parking. Which was the minimum. We then, in order to respond to Main Street concerns. Residential concerns bump that up to thirty percent, not thirty five percent, okay? So that's one thing. Number two is, I think that some point soon, you, the the trustees. Some point soon, you, you, the, the trustees should have a sit down with Park Mobile again because. What we found out. Sort of over that process was. Um, the Park Mobile system is slightly less nimble than it sounds. Um, and so in the matter of adjusting rates or adjusting time. Turning it on and turning it off is not a problem, so. In response to Tweeps' question about surge pricing. They do not have the capacity that if all of a sudden at one o'clock, there are. You know, uh, parking jams fourteen miles to. Then raise the rates to respond to that. It takes them a couple of days to readjust. Their pricing, and so what we envisioned with them was that you would go through this year of seeing.
Yeah.
You know, a pattern form as to demand. And so that if for the weekends from May to whatever, from May to October thirtieth. You're getting ninety percent capacity. On Main Street on the weekends and Fair Street now on the weekends. You probably have an opportunity there discussing it with Park Mobile because they're knowledgeable about this. About bumping up the rates for that period of time. But it's not as responsive as you, you might think, okay? And I think that you should learn the limitations. Of what they can and cannot do, and that will help you project out. How and when you're going to change the, you know, the rates, okay?
Thank you, Jack.
Okay, I'll see you all.
See you later.
Bye.
So you also. Um, in this proposal. Your, your last recommendation was.
So pricing for resident.
Resident permits.
Yeah, so, um, I think in the. Parking committee recommendations, they'd set it at ten and then there had been discussion of making maybe twenty. For a parking permit, um, I think that considering the privilege that. Residents who are eligible for these permits receive, um. And also, uh. The cost of implementing all of the signage and maintaining all of the street marking for it. Um, we might wanna consider raising that price so that it meets at least the cost of implementing it.
So. I guess we have to ask what the, what the goal is. Right, and I think. Park this was making, and making it easy for. Residents to participate and. To shift some of the cotton, we're all, we're all. Paying, as it were, as re- as residents, living in a high visitor zone, visitor area. And so, um. Raising that, we're, we're trying to shift the, the, in the burden of the cost. Onto visit, more onto visitors and less onto residents, so that residents aren't paying as much, not only with their pocketbooks, but also. Sort of. In terms of feeling. Feeling as if they're, um, overburdened. Um, so I, I wouldn't be in favor of going very high. Um, I think ten is low, um, but I, I personally wouldn't be in favor of going beyond. Fifty or so. Um. Go ahead, Catherine.
Um. I, I think that. The metering will pay for. Quite a number of things in terms of implementation and marking and so forth, um, but I do think that anything. Not costing. Something that feels like it's a value diminishes the value. Um, I think it should be the cost of a parking ticket. I think it's what, forty-five dollars?
That's what I was suggesting, I mean, that's not why, but the note I was suggesting. Too, that, that some folks, them included, don't, don't have, they just don't have driveways, I don't have a driveway either. Um, you don't have a driveway either.
Yeah, so I.
Some, you know, much. I don't, those aren't folks that we want to burden, or we don't wanna burden folks for living in. On the neighborhood that happens to be the neighborhood that takes the biggest hit, right? You're, you're, you'd be, I think, unduly burdening the folks who live on those streets by. Making it about. Cost offset, cause the goal here is to shift the cost off, cost offset to visitors.
Right.
It seems like a really small, compared to the amount from. Metering, it's a small number. So I guess I'm, I'm less in favor of having a higher, high amount for the, for the residence sticker, we pay for our. And paying for the roads through our taxes and. Um, uh, and. I would, I would be more in favor of something like twenty, especially if someone needs to have two, if they don't have a parking. Space at all and they need to purchase two and they're doing that every year, like, I feel like that, cause. We wanna bring people along with this program and one small way it might be having a lower. Or kind of a, a middle.
So there are some things that we wanna consider, um. In terms of total housing units on the residential side streets that are eligible, there's, um, and I, I don't have. The exact number, cause I didn't look at the water. Meter numbers, but I took an estimate by walking the streets and being like, that's one unit, that's one, two units. Um, so my guess or my, my average was one thirty-three total housing units of those ninety-nine have.
That, that actual count data is available from, in the, in the record from the parking committee. So, so that is something that we can go back to, so say your estimate again.
So a hundred and thirty-three units and ninety-nine driveways, ninety-nine driveways. Um, so it's not a huge number of houses that don't have. But if we gave all of the ones with no driveways to permits, not give, but were. For option, yeah, um, and all of the housing units with driveways one, and then if all of them.
We lost something. We can't hear.
All right. All right, good.
But we missed, you know, I don't know.
The connection is very unstable tonight, I'm seeing it as I'm watching all of you move, it's unstable and obviously we just lost connection completely.
That was that user error.
Sure wasn't Jeff.
Can I just finish? So, so parking spaces, um, that are in the residential district. Um. Let me see, pull it up. Um, currently. There are two hundred and fifty-five, um. And after changes to like crosswalk setbacks. We lose sixteen, um, and. We're adding eighty-four or we're keeping eighty-four for public parking for, you know, Main Street residents or, or anyone who. Comes and parks there, um, and that would leave a hundred and fifty-five residential parking spots. So if we have a hundred and fifty-five spots and we have. Um. A hundred and thirty-three housing units. And a portion of those, like thirty-four of those are going to need two permits. And then guest permits. What I'm saying is we have, um. You know, the chances that everyone's gonna park on the street is the same, I don't have slim to none, but. Um, we don't have as much inventory for residential parking spots as we projected for what we want to offer.
In the, in, in what the.
In the plan.
Plan put forward.
Yeah.
But those free parking spots. Would also be available.
To residents, and I don't see there ever being a problem on those side streets, once the. Residential parking plan goes into place, I don't think, I think things will get better. You know, cause you're not gonna have any random people parking on those streets. In the areas that are designated just for residents. So I don't think that's a problem, but I, I don't know if we need to consider, you know. Can you sell three hundred permits for? You know, two hundred and. Whatever number spots. Is that?
Are you saying? Could you issue, would you want to issue more permits than you actually have spaces for?
Right. We have a hundred and fifty-five spaces and if everyone, you know, chose to get. Their allotted amount of permits and their guest permits, then we would have three hundred permits. For a hundred and fifty-five slots.
Good. Um. I mean, for people who don't have a driveway. They need more than one, but I mean. For the amount of people with driveways, and sometimes you want the permit because you wanna pull up in front of your house, it's easier to get to something. But generally speaking, you could put your car in the driveway and so. You could, you know, that person would want a spot on the street sometimes, but not all the time, so they. Would be parking in their driveway some of the time.
So there, so there's likely to be more balancing than, than that wrong number suggests.
Right, well, I guess, you know, it's like. Uh, for instance, I think Garden Street's a great example. There are almost every house on Garden Street, if not every house on Garden Street. There's, I think, three houses on Garden Street that don't have driveways, but everyone else has them. But that street is always full of cars and it's all resident cars, or generally speaking, um, it's. Very many residents park on the street.
Or if you get in that driveway, probably.
There is that element too, so, you know, I, I think whatever people wanna do, you know, if, if. You're allowed to purchase a, a permit, you can, but, um.
A permit doesn't necessarily guarantee a spot at the time that you wanna spot.
Right, right, people should understand that, and also if you have three cars in your household and you decide to. Get all the permits that you possibly can and, and, you know. That seems like it could be abused, that's all.
Well, and maybe that's also the way that we roll this out, is explaining what you just said, but it's. Allows you to park there, but it's.
Place in front of your house just because you. Everybody else's house.
Which is. And is not unique to Cold Spring.
When I had my house, I had such a long driveway that my employees used to park in it, so.
So in terms of, well, first. Are there additional questions? For Eliza on this iteration of her analysis?
Um, would you then suggest limiting initially the number of permits we offer?
I don't, I don't really, if, if we don't have to, I don't see why. Um, but I, but I wonder if maybe we charge, um. Like a higher price for the guest permits. That's something that would discourage people from abusing it, like, what if somebody buys one, gets one, and then like hands it to their friend on Main Street? I would love one, but, what?
Commercial, what about, what about somebody that has an Airbnb or, um, you know, I mean.
That I think we should address the Airbnb, um. Yeah, I would, I would not jumble that into this. Because I think that gets messy and, and I don't.
You ask for a guest permit and your guest is a paying guest at the same time.
I just don't know how we would even be on top of that, like, how would we know one way or the other, like, sometimes it's for a guest, sometimes it's for the electric guy. So.
Well, but if you're building, if you're building that into the fee structure. With short term, and that's one of the things, in fact, the short term rental committee is meeting tonight, they have their last meeting tonight. Before they make a presentation to us, so that's among the questions we can ask them. Um, their, their considerations on that thought. Um. In terms of next steps. I think get sharpening, sharpening the numbers. Um, with Michelle to make sure we're getting an accurate picture, setting up a session with Park Mobile. Um, Jeff has been working on calendars going forward because we've got a number of. Working groups coming forward with proposals, et cetera, to consider. So Jeff can help us find, uh. A good time to arrange with Park Mobile, it's, hi Birdie.
Hi, Birdie.
Were you motioning to say something, Tweeps, or was that just a squeaky chair? Okay. Um. I would recommend revising the. The fee. Your fee proposal for, for permit.
Um, with this permits, there's all different prices in there.
Yeah.
Um, so if we wanna keep it at fifty, if you wanna keep it at twenty. Those numbers are there that you can, you can see what the revenue is.
Right.
Really, the village trustees have to decide so that I can move forward and work on the code. Which has to be updated and then we will have public process where we review updates. And the adoption process, so. There are layers, but I would love some like, you know, where are we comfortable, like. Permit pricing at twenty, thirty-five, fifty, where, um, you know, meter pricing at. You know, four dollars on Main Street, three fifty-three, where? Cause that allows me to move forward, I can't really do. I, I would love to get somewhere closer to those numbers so that me and Michelle can drill down to actual specifics. And give you more specific information, these are just general.
I would have her work with the rate, the rate, have the two of you work together in the ranges. Right now, so we have, so we can see the range. I think that will help, that will help make the decision, I think it sounds as if we've got sort of rough consensus. I didn't, we didn't hear from Tweeps on the amount of. A, a, a higher or a lower amount for the permit, there, it was tip ten put forward by. The parking committee, um, Eliza has suggested higher numbers. This table has talked about twenty, forty-five, fifty, um. What is your feeling on permit structure, permit cost?
Um, I think ten is too low. Um, I think fifty would be the max. So. Um. But I'm in favor of it being, it, it's a. It's a privilege and. You know, I mean, I think there's a, there's a cost to that and, um.
Be clear that it's a necessity for some.
It's a necessity for some. But, I mean. Well, I mean, if you have, you know. However many vehicles you have, how, like, I just think that, um. There's, it's a valuable. Thing, you know, it's kinda like real property in a weird sort of way, so I would price it as such. So ten to me is kinda like. You know, it, that, that, that says to me that it's not really important. I don't, forty-five, I don't know. I would say, I would say fifty, to be honest, that's my, my gut, but I'm. I would like to hear what, what the community. Would think about that. So I realize that's not exact, that's not really an answer, but.
We're all, we're all closing in around. A range, yeah.
What is, what did the parking committee recommend for second permit? Maybe forty-five. Or, or even, you know, for the person who doesn't, can we price it? For the person who doesn't have a driveway?
Right, can you?
Can we give them like? Twenty. I don't know, some number. And then.
That's the clerk who would be implementing it.
The recommendation that were approved by the board last, I think it was November.
August.
On, um. Called for, if you had an address with off-street parking, you were entitled to one permit. Or if you had an address with no off-street parking, you were entitled to two permits. And the fee was ten dollars per permit, so that's what had been previously voted on. Um, la- last year, but that's kinda your jumping off point is what's important.
So that gives you, that already.
There was no option for three permits per household. Guest permits, I believe, were addressed on an as-needed basis, so if you're gonna have contractors. You would call and you would get a pass issued for whatever the luck duration was, if you have no weekend guests.
Ah, okay, that I did not understand.
Guests is, um, so.
I wouldn't make them all the same price then, just to make it easy. Again, simplicity is really our friend when it comes to putting in a complicated plan.
Driveway, we could give them two at the same price of one or for ten dollars more.
The goal here, the goal here was to assist people who don't have driveways and make it easier for them to be able to park on the street. So the, no off-street parking was given to. Already have off-street parking, you could only um, get one. And that, that was meant to, to sort of limit demand on the supply. Um, and then there was the question of legal rental units. Um, they were all the same price. I think that it's worth considering as you're talking about a, a, a price, a price ladder for people without driveways, et cetera.
I'd be in favor of something like thirty-five for your first vehicle if you don't have driveway and then fifty for your second, or if you do have a driveway, then it's fifty for your one off-street. So that recognizes the kind of first, the, the lower price recognizes the situation for the.
I mean, I think we should also realize that, like, if you buy a house without a driveway, you're probably paying a lower market rate. So.
Yeah, but then there's also recognizing that people who paid a lower market rate maybe have less. I mean, I know it's small, it's because of the tiny, like, we're debating a tiny point. But I just think that when we roll this out, we wanna do it in a way that shows that we're recognizing residence, like, residents' needs and situations and. Yeah, well, they would be considered, and that would, would be one way to indicate it.
I like the idea of thirty-five and fifty.
So the other thing that I need to go back and, and revisit, because I just don't remember that clearly. The question of legal rental units and, and trustee early had separated it by water metering. But we know that there are a number of, we know that there are a number of rental units that don't necessarily have separate meters, but do have more than one unit in the building. I just need to go back. I myself need to listen to that discussion again.
That, that was, in a nutshell, what, what was said. It, it was, I think, trustee early was, um, hoping that it would force anyone whose whole building is sharing, you know, multiple units sharing one meter, would force them to then break out their meters and, and. Appropriately at the village hall, because they come in here to Jeff and say, I would like to get, you know, five permits for all my tenants.
Your baseline to use to kind of identify how many rental units there are without actually going in it, counting, counting doors in the buildings on Main Street.
It was a methodology.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that it will become clear as we roll out what the actual, what the actual need is.
Right.
Um, okay, so, so setting up with Park Mobile, who, making adjustments on permits, I'm sorry, on the, the numbers we've discussed. Um, what else do you need? What do you need as a next step?
Um.
Oh, I, but budgeting for signs. Um, so some signs were to have been ordered before June, they were not. In the budget issue, that your cost estimate is about nine thousand. In the budget or sign this year, that's high.
Yeah.
In the budget, we have about two thousand. We could draw from general funds to pay for the balance. But one of the questions I had was, Bugsy had said that he had some uh, surplus signs in stock. Does your estimate take his surplus signs into account or no?
I don't know what signs those are, but I think we're gonna be changing almost every sign unless he has like spare, um, like, no U-turn signs, which are faded and things like that. But a lot of the signs that we're ordering are, you know, changing the hours and. So I, I, I would have to check with Bugsy and see what his surplus is.
Bugsy told me that he can change what is on the sign. I don't know if it's a laminate, I don't know how it actually gets done, but metal to do it, then we could, in theory, change the language.
So get cl- get clarity on that process, because what I, what I see, when I see changed signs is like a sticker on top, and it's, you know, it doesn't look great, they don't, they don't hold up well. I mean, if we're, if we're do, if we're doing this, I think we should do it right. Um, but know that we don't have, what we budgeted for this project is not what we're gonna ultimately going to need. And I know that that's a wrong number that you took, that we have.
Yeah, it was, it was real general. Bugsy was gonna go out to, and Michelle as well, we're both going out to different companies that they've worked with to get pricing on it. So, I mean, we would have to maybe put a bid out, um, and get three different prices.
We have to follow procurement policy.
So that's, um, again, these were just general, and I, I went high on the numbers and so it'll, it'll be less than nine thousand for all of the signs. Um, but that doesn't count for the cost of implementing, which is Bugsy and the boys' hours on.
That's the other piece to refine with, with Bugsy and Michelle is what, what that number is likely to be. It may be, one of the things we may want to look at, um, is subbing out. This is gonna take a lot of, this is gonna take a chunk of time um, from, from roadways and facilities doing other things.
Right.
So I don't know how, how Bugsy might estimate the hours that it would take him to do that many signs. Um.
Well, for instance, he said two hours per pole installation. We have.
Saying it may be.
Sixty-six pole installation.
Right. So what we don't want to have happen is a standstill on all of our other services from, from highway while we're dealing with the signs. Though I think it's worth looking at an approach of subbing it out. Um, I'm doing a bid for that. What are you, your, your faces?
It just adds to, if we subcontract it, then we're talking bid RFPs most likely, because of the, the, what it'll cost.
Right, but I think we also have to be realistic about what three people can accomplish.
Uh, yeah.
Um.
In two months.
In two months, right, to get this, to get this up and out and, and keep up with the other work they've got.
Well, we also have to consider how long it may take to order signs. Um, and so that, that is one piece where we actually have like, you know, fire underneath us because the supply is, is wonky these days, and so it could take three months to get those signs, but it could take six months, it could take eight months, and that'll push the whole project out. So the sooner we start, the sooner we land on decisions that allow us to order the signs, the better.
So what are the decisions that you need to be able to order the signs? The hours?
Right, the hours of different parking zones, um, I think.
That will be answered with information from Park Mobile.
Right, right. Um, well.
In terms of, like, we were asking, how do you make signs flex?
Right, yeah, no, and, and that'll help inform it for sure. Um, that's the main thing for, to get these signs that we need. No, that's really the only thing that would have to be nailed down, like what. That's right.
So we have a, we have set aside on next, our next workshop agenda, a follow-up on parking on the thirtieth. So if we can get Park Mobile here on that day, that would be. Go ahead.
What do we want Park Mobile for? It might be just as easy if we have specific questions to send it to them and as opposed to full presentation.
Why don't you reach out and see what?
Okay. Yep.
And the, the questions really revolve around how much flexibility, what is the process for changing?
Well, and again, I don't really think Park Mobile will affect our street signs, because they're gonna have their signs that say, type in this zone and key in this phone number or go to this app, and it will tell you how much you're paying there. So that's, that's not, we're never gonna put like the rates on signs on the street.
So what, I'm sorry, what you're saying, I, when Tweeps took us off with surge pricing, Tweeps, it got my head wrapped around variability. But what you're saying is choose, choose a single time.
Right, we just need to say, are we doing ten to six? Are we doing the ten to nine? Are we doing nine to six? What, what are our hours on Main Street for the meters? And, and I do think that we should get public comment before we decide that right here and now.
Yeah.
Um, so maybe another meeting and, and giving the, you know, a week of public comment and or whoever's in the audience today.
Yeah.
And listening to them.
Well, I, I think we need seasonality too, right, months? Wouldn't that be on a sign?
Well, if we wanna do seasonality, but what I heard from two out of four of us, and I didn't hear Tweeps tune in on that, was whether seasonality mattered. Also, days of the week, there was, you know, I did throw out the idea of Friday through Sunday, but I would only recommend that to make up for if we were doing a seasonal thing. But if we're doing it all year round, then I would start with just Saturdays, Sundays, and then Monday holiday, or holiday, actually, holiday.
Weekend and holidays.
Yeah.
I have had a conversation with Tweeps months ago on that, so you should maybe.
Yeah, Tweed, do you have thoughts on that?
Tweed does have thoughts on that, yes. Um, I think, um, as far as seasonality is concerned, I mean, I, I agree, I'm not sure who said it, but we're kind of well past the, the concept of us being just like a, you know, May through October destination. Um, I agree that COVID is totally like, just throw that, throw that concept out. Um, so, uh, I think I would probably recommend just for for ease to do it a year round. Um, but then I would change the days. And, and again, I think it's important, you know, this is our first outing with this will be a test, right? We're gonna learn very quickly what's, what makes sense and what works best. So, um, I would say, you know, maybe for, for the start, we just do the, the weekend days and then holiday days, which are usually end up being Mondays or whatever. Um, and then add days as, as needed, but make it year round.
The fact that we're gonna roll it out in the spring gives us the whole summer into October to sort of play with whether we wanna turn them off in November or, or not anyway.
Yeah.
And also, that's consistent with the recommendations of the committee as well. Except that we'll have signs.
Right, I don't think we need to put the signs up.
But I don't think the signs have to be like, and that's why, that's what I was trying to get at with the, with the surge pricing, which I realized just, as I said, it would maybe was like a little too much, but like, the concept of like, we can use technology also to inform people what is happening on the street. And I grant that, like, Park Mobile maybe doesn't have the capacity to like change things up in terms of prices. But if we say, you know, for, for now, we say these days, um, you know, Friday through Sunday or whatever, and then if we wanna add a day, then, then it takes Park Mobile however long it takes them to change the technology, which I can't imagine is that complicated. And then the next week, that person comes and now they have to pay for parking on that added day. And I don't think the sign has to constantly, I think we can use the technology as a way to inform people of what's happening on the street, regardless of the sign. But the signage is additional information, if that makes sense. So even if it doesn't reflect exactly, because what we're talking about is a sign that would be like, you know, a scroll to have all the information that we need.
So what you're looking for, you're looking for as, as, as broad as, we are not the first municipality to do this.
I believe that is true.
We're gonna have better information about what our options are with signage after an, an additional discussion with Park Mobile. What we're looking for is a general sign that informs people that you need to feed the meter.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, and we could even, you know, like, the sign would be, that'll be there because the Park Mobile signs will be just as apparent as the, like, um, three-hour parking time limit sign. Um, so, and, so I think that those, those signs for the time limits are the ones that tell you, um, you know, what the limit is, and then go to this website or go, go to, go to the village to see what the current parking status is, whether it's metered or not. Something like that could be added at the bottom so that it leaves us flexible and we can use technology, as was suggested.
Maybe that's something we could, is a possible mock-up, what you have in mind, or a couple of options, so that we can look at it. I, I have in my mind the old-fashioned signs that say like dates and times, and so. Over, but I, I like the idea of being more nimble.
Just, and how does, how does it matter?
I think we have, it's five after nine. We have a few more items that we need to deal with tonight, and we have some folks in the public who would like to make comments. Are, are we clear on what our next steps are?
Yeah, closer, for sure.
Awesome. So. Are you awake?
Yeah.
This one's not gonna be for much longer.
So, so Jim, you, yes, go ahead.
Yes. Um, all of you, I'm sure, are aware already what my concern is. I live at one sixty-two Main Street, next to what had been C and E Paint Store. From there on up to the Sunoco Station, has always been treated for parking regulations as residential. There is no time limit on our side of the street, no four-hour limit parking. My understanding is there will be metered parking on that side, and we will not be treated as residents and not given resident, the option to buy residential permits.
Because it tracks the zoning, and you, you're, although you have a residential property, your residential property is located in a B-one zone, and the state enabling legislation follows the zone.
Is there any way to make an exception for, for us? Because it puts us in a very difficult situation, is now we have to be paying the parking meters.
Or, or, or paying, or parking on a side street.
We can park on a side street?
So in that.
Understanding was that's going to be limited to people with residence permits.
No, thirty percent is.
That is open in public parking. So it may not be right in front of your house, but a portion, we are required to keep a portion of the residential parking zone open to anyone.
There will be four spots around the corner from your house available for everyone who lives on Main Street on this block. So it's, and then a block further on, um, Northern, there'll be twenty-one spots.
What about High Street?
High Street is the one that will have four spots. That'll, six total, four on one side and two on the other. Church will have, I think it was four as well.
It would be useful next time to have the, the map available, the updated map.
Those spots are not for Main Street residents, those are for anybody who could be tourists.
That's right, they're available to the public.
Yeah, so, no, I don't have it over here. It's in there.
Back here.
Yeah.
But you had, you are updating them, yeah.
Um, I've got my sketch, but it doesn't, I don't have all the side streets. So.
These numbers are no longer accurate with the, with the crosswalk provisions.
More or less, yeah. I, I left those. So it's three spots on Church Street and six spots on High Street towards Main Street. And then on the other end of those blocks on Northern Avenue, there's a big block of twenty-one, ten, eight. I, Northern Avenue will all be free, but that is a block away, so.
What, so? Yeah, I, yeah.
Yes, okay. Um, first of all, I'm gonna say Bow Bow Fifty Main Street. I live between Stone Street and Depot Square. I wanna say, first of all, I'm completely in favor of metering and completely in favor of residential parking. I've talked to the committee a lot when they were going. I wanna make a couple of points. The first is that the committee's recommendations that you're starting with did not include any Main Street representation. There were no Main Street residents on the committee. They tried to account for Main Street residents' needs, but I would liken that more to a benevolent caretaker than actually having representation on. A benevolent caretaker than actually having representation on there, so when you're considering those recommendations, I hope you'll consider that. Um, those of us who live on Lower Main and a lot of Main Street, a little different than what my, my neighbor here says. We are in the thick of it all the time and on the weekends, we get it, we're totally done with it. There are, I have, I have neighbors who park their car on the side street and never move it on the weekends because they don't wanna deal with the hassle. Those of us who have children, families, events, responsibilities, we get it, we know what to do. We go park on the Boulevard or we go park in the Metro North a lot of the weekends. We're used to it, you know, we come home from a soccer game or a play date and we know we're gonna have to drop off the kids on the weekend because it's a zoo. However, during the week, we park on Main Street, we park on the side streets, Main Street fills up. As Catherine said, it gets very, very busy with tourist people coming in and it is year round and it is Monday through Friday, those spots are gone. I am here to strongly plead that the board not implement residential parking Monday through Friday. The reason for that is because those of us who live on Main Street will have no place to go. We can't go to Metro North, we won't have side streets, those six spots on Stone Street or whatever those other steep spots are. Those are gonna get snapped up by tourists or people coming into the village just as the rest are. And if you go through the village on weekdays, there are plenty of spots for the most part on the side streets. Now, there are some days on Garden Street that it gets pretty busy and again, that goes back to what you're discussing, you have people who have driveways who aren't using. So maybe that is a reason to charge more for a permit for someone who has a driveway, but. All of those side streets typically have spots on the weekdays and if those become residence only, the rest of us are out of here. And so I urge you to consider that you're looking at maybe sharing the inconvenience of what's happening with parking during the week. Among all the residents versus privileging some and leaving everyone else out in the hole, that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much.
And I gotta get this kid home to bed, so we gotta run.
Night, Sebba.
May I just go back again, my memory is not working so well here. Does this mean that we, one sixty-two Main Street and up, would be able to get residential permits or not?
This, this, you, you don't, under the state enabling legislation, you don't qualify. For a residential parking permit because you are in a B one zone. The R one zone qualifies for the parking permit. What, what I think is left unanswered from the previous discussion is what accommodation. Well, the accommodation was made via the expansion of the free public parking. By creating more free public parking spaces. I think that, that Bo's, Bo's point on, about weekdays is, is worth talking about further. You know, thinking about the loss of the, the loss of the municipal lot, um, and different pressures during the week than on the weekend. I noticed something maybe in the old recommendations that talked about the residential parking only on. Only on weekends and, and I was confused by it. This is the app, the app based parking, recommending putting into place. I knew, okay, but you can see how. No, I totally see the logic and it answers the question for me of why that would be on the table.
There are eleven spaces at the end of Stone Street near Main.
They put a lot down, they, we did it heavily down towards, um, Lower Main. Because there's no Northern Avenue there.
Right, no, 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 I mean, I think that's great, but.
Up here, there's a lot.
There are eleven down there, I mean, granted, half of them will be, or more than half will be taken by realtors.
It's work there, right?
Well, part of the parking plan is, is the recommendation and that people who work on Main Street park on the Boulevard.
That's not something we can enforce though.
But these are free spots, who's gonna tell them they can't park there?
Well, they're available to the public.
And the realtors are public.
So there are, there are degrees of what we can control, right?
I mean, to his point of, he lived right there and in my mind, I'm thinking, well, there are eleven spots down there. But the realtors are gonna gobble them all up.
He's on.
No, 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 not Jim.
Oh, Bo, you mean?
Right, I mean, eh, eh, as a resident on Main Street.
Spots, cuz you really don't.
I would park my car and leave it, but you know, Saturday morning, I go to the farmer's market. So I'll go to the farmer's market and come back and there will be no parking and I'll be parking elsewhere and, and that'll be the experience for Bo who's, you know, got. Ball games or things.
Experience already, it's your experience already. His question was, could we take into consideration the weekday scenario in which the free parking at Metro North is not available? The free parking is not available.
You've gotta apply for it.
With Catherine, we're not whispering in a public meeting.
Sorry, sorry, just like.
There are, there are ADA spaces on Main Street. Um, Eliza's recommendation to come up and compliance with ADA is to add another space.
Yeah, but if you have an ADA placard, you can park anywhere. You can park in the resident district, you can park on Main Street, you have, if you have that hook.
In one of those designated.
And you put it, well, no, you can park anywhere, like.
Really, you can park in the residential?
That was my understanding of.
But what it gives you privilege for is designated ADA spots.
It means nobody else can park there, but if you have an ADA hook. And you park in an area that's two hour parking only and you leave your car for six hours, I believe.
No. Clarity on that, I don't believe so, it doesn't exempt you from parking.
I'm pretty sure the placard, I mean, it doesn't exempt me from metering rules or anything else. It just basically, there's a, if there's a handicap space. Yeah, but you still have to follow any metering rules, any other, any other rules would be subject to ticket.
So meter, a handicap spot is still a metered spot?
I wasn't, we are metering it?
In the municipal lot, there is a handicap spot that's metered.
Um, okay, I think we're all starting to be bleary eyed and fried.
Nice to see when I first started, that's one of my, maybe my first meeting with parking.
Or garbage or something. Okay, so.
Mind numbing.
Thank you, Eliza, very much. So we have small bits of board business. In the budget last year, in this year's budget, we have money set aside. For body cameras for our police officer, it's the upper question. The community survey, um. We have, we do not have them yet, we budgeted them for the second half of the year, um, and we need to. Larry's in process of working on policy to put forward to the community advisory board. On community advisory committee, ad hoc advisory committee on community policing, um. I would not be in favor of implementing use of body cameras until we first had a policy in place. But we have a time limited opportunity to get money, so that we're not pulling it out of our village budget. We have budget money available for other things, lost track of my. Um, so this request is. Authorizing us to make the application for the grant, it's two thousand dollars a camera. The very simple application, I can't seem to find it in front of me, there you go. And would that cover the full cost, so if there's a mandatory, um, it will cover much of the cost? Do you remember what the number was that Michelle and Larry were talking about?
And speaking with Michelle yesterday about this, we do not have, there's no state contract.
Right.
For these, so it's, I think.
It's a bit.
It's a bit, I believe we were talking about five thousand dollars per last year, but that was. I think that's, but that included the setup fees and everything.
That was the, the software as well.
Software, and so there's, it changes after the first year.
The actual equipment purchase, so it does reduce the cost quite a bit.
How many do we need?
Um, Larry is narrowing that down, he has said anywhere from.
Seven, was the number he said earlier?
Last I heard was four to six.
He sent me an email today, um, asking for seven.
Obviously, there are a lot of things that need to get clarified, our goal here is to take, capture grant money while we can. And the request is permission for Michelle to apply, to apply for the grant. She will work with, with Larry to finalize number, he has stated anywhere from four to seven. I think what, what he's trying to figure out, um, is when a camera, in the same way that we don't have. All the cars on the road at the same time, right, you have, you have motor down, you, what? If you have more than one officer on duty, you need to have two cameras available, right? And what, what, there's one downloading, so you need a different one. We can, we can ask for more specific information from Larry, I'm concerned that we can get the grant in on time.
Motion to authorize Michelle to, uh, apply for the grant for the body cameras.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, it requires a policy, well, if we receive funding, so. Yes, it, it will drive it, yeah. And we have a draft, just needs, it needs to be finalized and go to the ad hoc committee and then on to the trustees. Um, okay, next is, uh, authorizing the village attorney to conduct secret training. Our code requires training for the zoning board and the planning board, it's been quite some time since any has been properly given. Um, we are, we have asked the planning board and the zoning board to take the online general training with. Um, NICOM because it's cheaper, thirty dollars a person, um, and that's the basic, you know. What it means to be a zoning board member, what your rights and response, what your responsibilities are, et cetera, et cetera, the very baseline stuff. But, um, we, I think that we need some drill down training, um, related to environmental quality review. Um, for the planning board and the zoning board and I would like the village attorney to do it so that they can have an interactive session. Um, so the, the amount. Um, it would be compiled by. A junior member of the firm at a lesser rate, one hundred and thirty-five, and then the, the. Course itself would be provided by the village attorney at our standard rate of two seventy-five, we have money to do this in our professional services line. But you will need to authorize the use of the firm to do that. Like, we just need to, we need to have our chops. Um, what's the expression, not, not strength in chops, but we need to be.
Absolutely.
We need to, we need to have everybody well trained going into some of the big applications that we have coming forward.
Will we also be able to?
And it's going to be after, at the end of a planning board session, but because they're already all convening for that, so after they finish their application. I think December second was the date. So if someone would, um, make a resolution. Go ahead, poor Eliza's been.
Been talking all night.
So, um, the following resolution was offered by Laura Bozey for adoption and seconded by me. Catherine Patty, uh, Tuitt, and then in my reading, what were you holding? Yep, whereas pursuant to the New York State Village Law, section seven, seven one eight, seven A and seven, seven one two, seven A. Each member of the planning board and zoning board of appeals shall complete a minimum of four hours of training each year. Designed to enable the board members to more effectively carry out their duties and. Whereas the New York State Village Law, section seven, seven one eight, seven A and seven, seven one two, seven A. Such training shall be approved by the village board, it may include not only training provided by the county, a local college or other regional planning municipal organization. But it can also include training provided by the village itself. And whereas board members have specifically requested training with respect to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and. Whereas it would be most effective to have the, the village attorney provide the necessary training. And whereas Katania Mahan and Ryder P L L C is an experienced land use zoning and municipal law firm. Represents numerous municipal boards throughout Hudson Valley and its attorneys have provided similar training for other boards. And whereas Katania Mahan and Ryder P L L C will provide a more detailed outline for the boards, which focuses on some secret issues. Will generally cover topics the planning board and zoning board of appeals deals with more often. Like when decisions are subject to secret classification of an action. Segmentation, coordinator review and taking the quote hard look for a negative declaration. And now hereby, now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village board authorizes a law form of. Katania Mahan and Ryder P L L C to provide the necessary trainings to the planning board and zoning board of appeals members. With this training session, which will, um, constitute approximately one to two hours of credit towards the four hour yearly requirements.
Trusty Bodie, trusty Patty, trusty Starbuck, trusty Woods. Mayor Bowie.
Hi.
This is Lou Doctor on this date by a vote of five zero.
Okay, so we'll, um. Make sure that the board is aware of when that's happening, I believe it's December second. Um, approval of minutes, nine twenty-one.
You quickly incorporated my, my modifications.
So, um, I make a motion to accept the minutes of September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Eliza's second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, bills, Jeff, can you, um, I know two of the trustees have already reviewed bills, but for the public's benefit, the number. Our, our bill payment is quite high this month, a hundred, or this week, a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty. Dollars and forty-nine cents, that includes.
That includes medical insurance, um, garbage, we had the bulk pick up. This also is for three weeks because we skipped a week. And those are the big things.
And insurance and, and electric bills.
Electric bills, true, yes.
Lots of electric bills.
Okay, so, um, if someone'd like to make a motion regarding the bills.
Motion to approve batch sixty-seven seventeen in the amount of a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, we've succeeded at the end there, but I do wanna acknowledge the. Huge amount of effort that Eliza has put forward and. That you have brought us to a place where we can't come into compliance on crosswalks and hydrants, um. That it wasn't consistent before was a problem, um, and the solution, the proposal that you're putting forward. The reclaimed spot's unfair, I think it's really smart, I just wanna say I'm. I'm grateful for it, um, and I think that overall, we are, I, I wanna make sure we close the loop on this. So Eliza has sort of next steps and, and forward, the next steps in line for going forward. We are, um. And her particular recommendations, um, removing the access spots and returning those driveways to inventory, we're all behind, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, um, returning fifteen minute parking spots. Uh, north side of Main Street, west corners, business blocks, or, or how are we all with that? Um, you didn't touch on this, but I think this is brilliant, we do have two underutilized bicycle racks. One is at the waterfront that never gets used, um, and there's a great spot to put it near the parking lot for. Between Ning Moon and the bakery, um, and the bike rack on the other side of the visit, visitor center, which isn't very visible. And Eliza was proposing to move that to a more visible location, um, I am really much, very much in favor of those two.
That would require breaking out the tree bed at, um, between ninety-two and ninety-four Main Streets, so. But.
Not necessarily straight away. It's a pretty level spot.
It's not the level, it's the weeds.
Yeah.
It's the weeds, so, and, and I believe that, um, the owner offered to donate, uh, cost for something of that sort, so.
Donation is another conversation that we need to have about, about policy and how we, how we manage that. We, the village obviously cannot actively seek donation, but we can.
Us and offered to, to cover the cost, so.
But in terms of locations. You good with that? Um. A, a, a general sense of Fair Street, the expansion of the hours on Saturdays, feedback for Eliza on that?
I, but I don't think we should make a decision until.
Yeah, I, I.
No, no, of course, not making decisions, but giving a sense of, so she knows. We talked about a lot of different things tonight, a lot of different directions, but she has a sense of where people are in their heads. Pursue is an option, okay, and I think we talked about potential of six PM, your feedback, this, you thought six PM. We're capturing another visitor hour, yeah?
Ten to six.
Metered fees we're gonna talk about is you and Michelle model it out. Um, days of the week, I think we wanna have a continued conversation on that based on feedback. Um, and we've given feedback on resident permit.
It sounded like we were saying. It sounded like we were saying Saturdays. Through Sundays and all year. That was what I gathered from the conversation.
Yes, what, what I think Bo is looking for clarification on is. During the week, will resident parking? Be enforced during the week?
Right, but metering on Main Street there.
Oh, yes, that's the question, sorry.
Saturday, Sundays and holidays all year. Is where we are, feeling we wanna go.
I was in the seven day category.
We're in the seven day category, so we have one in the seven day category, tweets feedback on that point?
I was weekend all year.
Yeah, okay.
And holidays.
Thank you for stepping back, I just wanted to make sure that we. Were clear on what the feedback was. Um, any?
Prices for resident permits, we're looking at thirty-five to fifty. And possibly a tiered system.
Yes, it's thirty-five and fifty, no?
Well, right, if it's tiered, thirty-five. First.
The only member of the public left is Michael. Do you have any questions or comments?
Um. Yeah, I do, actually. I have to find my button for my hand, though. And I'm barely, barely functioning, oh, there's, I'm raising my hand. So, um, just one. Comment, I guess, I'm. Wearing both my reporter hat and my resident hat, I wrote about crosswalks. I don't know, two or three years ago, it was mainly about crosswalks in Beacon where there was issues. But my one comment about crosswalks in Cold Spring is that they are so inconsistently marked.
Yeah.
To warn drivers as you approach one, but. The one that really bothers me, I guess, is, um. At Garden Street and at Church Street, there are what I would call informal crosswalks where. There are white markings painted across the road and. I have both seen them and experienced. Uh, post calls where both pedestrians and drivers are confused. Because those informal crosswalks don't mean anything. So my suggestion is you either erase those completely or assign them as proper formal crosswalks. That's it.
Trying to imagine, is it the Garden Street? Is on the east?
Well, it's, yeah, right in front of Angie's Sandwich Shop there.
Are you saying, Mike, that that one doesn't, it doesn't count because there aren't signs or that people are crossing at a different spot?
There are no signs, there are no signs either there or at Church Street.
Well, and that area of the, of the street needs repair, there's a, there's a, a dip at the center. And that needs to be. Infilled so that the painting can get done.
Yeah, but if I'm driving into Cold Spring and I'm driving down Main Street from, uh. Nine D, I don't see a sign that says, oh, there's a crosswalk coming up, there's just a white line painted across the road and that. I think really creates confusion.
Okay, yeah, noted, that's great.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night, thank you for sticking it out.
You too.
We're gonna get to stay up late tonight.
It's too late for Doug's even, so.
All in favor?
Hi. Good night.
So no meeting next week?
Right, one Tuesday before Thanksgiving.